This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held May 21st, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Alt House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Hulse?
Here.
Councilmember Hargie?
Here.
Councilmember Naren?
Here.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Here.
And Mayor Linsky?
Here, thank you. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is a brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noted for legal action. Do we have any council members that have something to report?
I have one thing I'd like to talk about. I attended this past Saturday the Habitat for Humanity Strategic Planning Meeting, and I just want to say that I was very impressed with how it was organized and how they came up and brainstormed through some things and came up with some preliminary goals and stuff. So I'm really looking forward to seeing their final plan. But also, they did share with me that they're looking forward, you know, because what they do is affordable workforce housing, and they're really looking forward over the next five years to partnering with the local cities and towns in an effort to increase that.
That's great.
It is, yeah, because it's really needed here.
Excellent, thank you. Thanks for being part of that, too.
Thank you.
Yes, I had an opportunity to meet with Magistrate Kelly this morning at her meet and greet, and she had a really nice turnout of people that were coming to visit and congratulate her. And we had a nice visit. I welcomed her to the court. I think she's going to do an excellent job.
Great, thank you for being there. Anybody else? Last Saturday, I attended the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition's Strategic Planning Retreat. We're second probably out of three meetings to get our retreat, our strategic plan together, and we're excited to unveil it to the public. And is it this Thursday, we're meeting with members of Local First Arizona to discuss creating more of a pipeline for career tech programs, I believe. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And then we're meeting with Dr. Ryan soon, too, to discuss workforce development also.
Right. Big buzzword, so everyone's kind of looking forward to making something happen in that field. All right, Mr. Mayor, what have you got?
I also met with our new magistrate this morning, and I agree with Councilmember Hulse. It's exciting, a breath of fresh air over there, and staff seems very happy. Things seem to be flowing, work's getting done. It's just a seamless transition to the new judge, and we're excited to have her onboard. She's been a great addition. Our library is getting ready to be real busy. They're going to be planting fruits and vegetables in their two new raised beds right outside their library this Thursday at 10:30 with the assistance of the Verde Valley Gardeners and the University of Arizona. So we appreciate them, and counsel, if you're available, come on out and help plant some plants. There also, the library has announced a food for fines from May 20th to June 1st, so bring in non-perishable food items, and each item donated will take a dollar off your late fines. We can only do this for late fees, not for lost items or other charges. Non-perishable items must not be expired. That would be kind of funny, giving expired cans for overdue book fines, but... And then your donations will go to the Old Town Mission in Cottonwood, which reminds me, I had a tour before my vacation of the Old Town Mission, and I'm impressed of what the work that they do out of the facility that they have and the care that they give back to our community for those that are less fortunate. So kudos to the Old Town Mission and the work that they do. I'm sure the library will also take any other donations if someone just wants to drop off some canned goods for the mission. The Mingus Union High School Operations Graduation is being hosted at the rec center this Friday from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The outdoor pool season officially opens this Saturday, May 25th, from 11:00 to 6:00. Look forward to seeing all of you out there in your Speedos and having a good time in the pool. I will not be there. The Historic Preservation Commission will be holding their regular monthly meeting this Wednesday here in the chambers at 6:00 PM. The Parks and Recreation Commission will be holding their regular monthly meeting this Tuesday at the rec center beginning at 5:00. And then the Old Town Association will be hosting their first annual cornhole mash on Saturday, June 1st, from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the Old Town Activity Park located there behind City Hall. There are two divisions for beginners and experienced. Food and drinks will be sold, and there will be over $1,000 in cash prizes. So if it's anything like the host they did for the old vehicles, the old cars in Old Town, it'll be a great hit, and I hope to see everybody out there. And last, almost forgot, was that this Saturday at noon, at the Verde Valley Military Service Park, there's going to be a changing of the flags, and that'll start at noon and go, it sounds like, for a little over an hour, I hear. It is a spectacular event. I encourage you guys to attend.
Very good. Okay, nothing else, then we'll move on to call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, and comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there anybody here this evening that would like to address the council? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the floor, then, and move on to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 7, 2019.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Hulse made the motion, and Councilmember Alt House seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. We have two items tonight under unfinished business. The first is ordinance number 663, adopting new fee schedules for the Building and Safety Division, Planning and Zoning Division, Fire Department, and Engineering Department, second and final reading.
Baron can come up, but really, we don't have a presentation. We're here to answer questions. Nothing has changed since the last reading, and the work session where we presented the material, so unless there's questions, we're here to answer.
Okay. Does council have any questions? No. Anybody here from the public tonight to speak on this item? No? Anything from you, Ms. Najad?
Nothing, no changes since the last time.
All right, very good.
I move to approve ordinance number 663.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Alt House made the motion, and Councilmember Matthews seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hargie?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Naren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
Okay, if we could please have you read ordinance number 663 by title only.
Ordinance number 663, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, adopting new fee schedules for the Building and Safety Division, Planning and Zoning Division, Fire Department, and Engineering Department. Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Okay, next is ordinance number 662, amending Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Municipal Code, update the city's uniform building, fire, and technical codes, second and final reading. Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Same deal, right? We've gone through it before, nothing changed?
Nothing's changed. Been here before.
Okay. Any questions from council on this? Anybody here from the public to speak on this item? No, okay.
Move to approve ordinance number 662.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Naren made the motion, Councilmember Hulse seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hargie?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Naren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
All right, please read the ordinance 662 by title only.
Ordinance number 662, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Municipal Code to update the city's uniform building, fire, and technical codes. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen saw requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence. So we have five items tonight on the consent agenda. I'll go ahead and read them out loud, and if there's anybody in the audience that would like to have an item pooled, just raise your hand. Special event liquor license application submitted by Christian Oliver Del Rio, applicant for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce, for the cornhole mash event scheduled for June 1st, 2019, at 187 East Pima Street. Item two is special event liquor license application submitted by Jennifer Perry, applicant for the Verde Valley Sanctuary for events scheduled for June 16, July 21, August 18, September 15, October 20, November 17, and December 15, 2019, at 633 North 5th Street. And item three is special event liquor license application submitted by Tacy Pastor, applicant for the Verde Valley Humane Society for events scheduled for June 1st, July 7th, August 4th, September 1st, October 6th, November 3rd, and December 1st, 2019, at 633 North 5th Street. Resolution number 3004, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Cottonwood and the Arizona Department of Revenue regarding the uniform administration, licensing, collection, and auditing of transaction privilege tax, severance tax, and rental occupancy taxes imposed by the state and/or the City of Cottonwood. Item five, request for consent to collateral assignment of lessees, leasehold interest in lots 120 and 121 of the replat of Cottonwood Air Park, tract 1, parts A and B from Bacchus Family Investments LLC to the State Bank of Arizona. Anybody in the public would like to have an item pooled? Any council member like to have an item pooled? Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Alt House seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. Okay, new business. Following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. We have three items tonight under new business. First up is interview of applicants for the Historic Preservation Commission. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Wilber, Human Resources Director. We currently have one full and one partial term Historic Preservation Commission seat available. We advertised the position and received three applications from Debbie Garrison, Corey Kratzser, and Randy Stevens. They, all three, meet the required qualifications to serve on this board, and because we have more applicants than positions available, they have already gone through the applicant review committee process. So now, all three of the applicants are here to be interviewed by council tonight, and then the top-scoring applicants will be brought back to the next council meeting for recommendation for appointment.
All right, very good.
Okay.
Any questions from council? Before we roll into this?
I'm going to step down, so I was on the blind matrix.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, then we'll go ahead and call up, in orders they were presented to us, the three applicants that are here tonight, hopefully, and we'll call up first Debbie Garrison. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good, nervous.
Don't be nervous. Easiest thing in the world.
The last time I stood in front of this dais was when my father-in-law was on the council.
Wow.
And I interviewed for a personnel board, and he had to recuse himself.
I see. Well, we'll take it easy on you.
Okay.
Don't be nervous. We have just three questions for you, and they're pretty simple. Okay. We'll go ahead and read you the first question. Please tell us why you wish to serve on this board.
Okay, I actually have a presentation for you, and it actually includes as to why I would like to serve on this board. So if you don't mind, may I?
We kind of don't allow presentations, and I'm sorry, because we'd have to make it fair for each applicant.
Okay.
So hopefully, you can incorporate elements of your presentation into the questions.
Okay.
Can you do that?
All right, so the question again, then?
Is, please tell us why you wish to serve on this commission.
Okay, first mayor, vice mayor, council, staff, and public. Good evening, my name is Debbie Garrison. I am a longtime resident of Cottonwood. I was born in Glendale, Arizona, and moved to Cottonwood almost a half a century ago at age eight. My husband and I, Randy, own three businesses. One is an e-commerce business, providing computer-related products to customers nationally and internationally. One's a speakeasy beer tasting room and store, and the other business is property management of family-owned properties. All three businesses are located and operate in Old Town. We own several properties of historic significance in the City of Cottonwood. One of those properties was built in 1923 by my husband's grandfather, Ursul Garrison. It was a Liberty Garage, which is located here in Old Town between the Iron Horse and Bocchi. There are also two buildings that complemented that garage, which were paint booth and auto body shop. We've done some renovations, rehabilitation to these buildings to add retail space in Old Town, and in doing so, we were mindful of what is required for them to remain historically relevant. Within the City of Cottonwood, there are many similar building structures and historic properties that represent the intentions of those who built them, the dreams of those who lived in them, and the efforts for those who've worked in them. Each one has a story that tells what our community is, defines how it became, and gives us a better understanding of who we are. Preserving those stories should be an important part of building a healthy community. Thus is my interest for serving on the Historic Preservation Commission.
Excellent, thank you. And the next question is, what are your specific qualifications for this commission?
My specific qualifications would be the history that I have with the City of Cottonwood. I currently serve on two nonprofit boards, one being the Old Town Association, supporting and promoting our historic Old Town District, and also serve on Happy Future, supporting our students, classrooms, teachers within the Cottonwood Oak Creek School District. The fact that my husband and I have renovated some buildings here in town, taking into consideration materials that were used in the time period of which they were built, and taking those things into consideration, I feel that I would be qualified to serve on this board.
And what do you hope to accomplish during your appointment?
I hope to accomplish, my interest in serving on this historic commission is to, is by encouraging and advocating for preservation, rehabilitation, or restoration of historic properties within our historic district and throughout Cottonwood. I believe Cottonwood's history will continue to bring economy and other benefits to our community, and I believe a community that respects its history respects itself.
Do you have any questions for us?
No.
No, all right, that's it.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you. I truly would appreciate your considering me to serve on this Historic Preservation Commission for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison, thank you very much. Okay, next up is Mr. Corey Kratzser.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for being here, thanks for your interest.
Thank you.
Same three questions.
Yes.
So we'll start at the top. Please tell us why you wish to serve on this commission.
Well, I haven't quite lived in the area as long as Debbie has, but I love this area. I've really fallen in love with it. I work up in Jerome, but it's all I can do to not promote Cottonwood. I just love Cottonwood, and I really want to learn more about the history of Cottonwood here. I've worked in a few places here, Crema, State Bar. I know a little bit about the history, but I feel like the only way I can do this is to really get involved more with my community here.
Great. And what are your specific qualifications for this commission?
Well, I have, other than my food and beverage background, I have a lot of construction, house painting, general construction, that I did down in Phoenix for about 15 years. So I'm aware of what the historical preservation stuff is all about, basically, and being able to recognize, you know, what kind of stuff is historic and what is not.
Mm-hmm.
I just feel like I can bring that to the council.
Okay. And what do you hope to accomplish during your appointment?
Knowledge, I just want to learn more. That's my biggest thing, why I'm applying for this. I really want to be a lot more knowledgeable about Cottonwood. It's on the verge of really becoming, like we're all hearing about it, the next Napa of Arizona, and I want to be one of those people that are on the front lines, talking about it, actively promoting this amazing community of ours.
And then, do you have any questions for us?
I haven't seen you at the asylum yet, so you need to come up and see me, please.
That's good.
All right?
That's good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You used to go to the asylum all the time when the Wolsey's owned it.
Oh, yeah.
Long time ago. It's a great restaurant. And then, do we have Randy Stevens here with us this evening? Great. Wasn't sure if you'd be able to make it.
Hello, my name is Council.
Thanks for being here again. Same three questions. So number one is, please tell us why you wish to serve on this commission?
Well, I've always had an enthusiasm for the historical aspect of just about everything. I was a military brat moving around, so I got to live in a lot of cool places with historical backgrounds, such as Pearl Harbor. I kind of started it when I was a young child. Lived in Charleston, so there's tons of old buildings there, Delaware, Georgia, where the Civil War and all of the historic landmarks and buildings, so it all started at a young age. I went on and I got a bachelor's in historic preservation, community planning, art history, and then a minor in Japanese. And I've always wanted to merge my dual masters and my dual bachelors into one, and I feel like this would be able to give me the opportunity to do so.
And you sort of already answered it, but what are your specific qualifications for the Historic Preservation Commission?
Well, I have a bachelor's in historic preservation and community planning, and then art history, a minor in Japanese. With studying, we went to various historical sites and landmarks, surveyed, we did a bell tower in Somerville, South Carolina, which was built, I believe, in the 1800s, and then we surveyed it. We documented, tried to use the whole AutoCAD, but the whole fun measuring and then putting it on a piece of paper, so three feet is like two millimeters on the paper and drawing it, why it was of significance, why we should do historic preservation. And then, I went on to do an internship with one of my professors, and she was doing risk management, so we documented the historical homes from major insurance carriers.
Great. And what would you hope to accomplish during your appointment?
One of them is knowledge, and then also to be able to sustain and preserve what we already have, so for our future generations, to be able to see. For instance, I know, Mayor, you were talking about the building across the street, brought your grandfather in town. If we didn't preserve that, then you wouldn't have known about that and be able to see it, so things of that nature.
Right, right, thank you. Do you have any questions for us? No? Okay, thank you. So as Amanda Wilber stated, we won't be making any decisions tonight. We're going to tally these results with the results from the interview committee, and then we'll make a decision at the next, I believe, the next regular council meeting. So thanks to all of you for your interest in wanting to volunteer on this board. We have a lot of fun, so thank you. Anything else on that? Sorry, I'm trying to catch up here. Next on the agenda under new business is request for final plat, approval for the Ridgecrest subdivision. Mr. Ellis, how are you?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Ridgecrest final plat came to you in April with the preliminary plat, some stipulations recommended approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Basically, what this is, currently, the property is approximately 5.2 acres with three parcels zoned R2, single-family, multifamily residential. It lies between 12th Street and 16th Street, just south of 89A. It is a current development that can go forward as it sits today. However, the developer-owner would like to subdivide it into 11 parcels. All of the stipulations from the preliminary plat have been met. They have provided an acceptable assurance that the streets will be completed. They've shown that they've met all the comments from the preliminary plat, and also that the site visibility triangle is not affected on some of the corner lots. Just another note, that the street system is private, treated as a driveway, kind of drive aisle system, so it's not any street, so it'll ever be dedicated to the city. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Any questions from council? We've gone over this before.
No.
No, okay. Anybody here from the public that would like to speak on this item? No? Okay.
So I will move to approve the Ridgecrest subdivision final plat.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Matthews made the motion, Vice Mayor seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hargie?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Naren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
And Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of additional funding for sidewalk projects and review of the sidewalk project list.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Robert Winnick, City Engineer and Public Works Director. Back on April 23rd, we talked streets and sidewalks, and you guys had some thoughts, possibly taking the 10% set aside from the half-cent sales tax, which should forward the public safety retirement paydown, and possibly putting that towards sidewalks, so we can have a bigger bag, try to get through the list of 32 priorities that I had, you know, which was $5 million, and try to get that knocked down a little quicker. So I went ahead and put together kind of a, an idea as to what we could possibly do, and I kind of outlined that in the council member, in your agenda there, as to what we could look at doing as an option. And roughly, $230,000 is what the three projects that I outlined consumed of that $259,000. Tried to stay about 10% below for any unforeseen that may come up, so that way we have money available, if that were the case. So I kind of, you know, took the focus of, let's finish out the Old Town area. If you look, we had talked the $100,000, we were going to go ahead and take care of Cactus Street, and that's all contingent upon the land trade going through and us getting the right-of-way. So kind of figuring that money spoke of, well, let's look at the $259,000, what can we go ahead and do? Came up with two projects. If you look at the north end of Old Town, where you get the curve there by Bocchi, you've got a gap in your sidewalk on the north side of the road until you get to Old 279. Basically, there's just a gap there, and then you got a nice sidewalk that goes up to Gray Fox. So the thought was, okay, can we go ahead and connect that area to Old Town? We have the trail system that comes in from the vineyards that at some point will become more trafficked, so thought, okay, let's try to fill in that gap. The other piece that I had was on Community Real, back behind Home Depot there, by the Shell Station. You've got a gap from 89A towards Elm Street. So the thought was, is on Elm Street, you have an apartment complex right there, and this would give you a chance to fill in that little bit of a gap, and allow people that are walking to get to 89A, plus the businesses, and also get out of that corridor. So that was the thought. Those three segments turned out to be about $230,000. I know there's some big desire for another part of town, down in Chuckwalla and Fur area there, to Monte de Soro. Originally, when we put numbers together, that had full curb gutter sidewalk driveways, you name it, that was like $1.4 million. That was to go Fur Street from Chuckwalla to Monte de Soro, and then Monte de Soro up to Iskate to fill in that area. Well, looked at some options, what can we do to go ahead and make that cheaper? So we kind of played around with some different ideas. Let's, you know, not do a lot of driveways, let's go ahead and just put in a complete sidewalk at grade, make a separation between the driving lane. That got us down to about $1 million for that whole stretch. Okay, we're going in the right direction, but we're still not where we need to be, right? So then we started looking at, what can we do? We had talked about possibly doing like a six-foot asphalt path as an option for the sidewalk. Do that at grade, separate that from the roadway. The overall stretch for that whole same area would be about $650,000 to $700,000. So again, we're down in the better range. But $650,000 to $700,000, I can't do that with 259. Okay? So if I step back and look at what are the options, let's try to look at doing just a walking path on the north side of Fur Street from Chuckwalla to Monte Tesoro, because that seems like that is a big, long stretch, a lot of pedestrians in that area. So if we do that, we're about $250,000. So that falls within the range of 259. So I've outlined one plan of, let's look at Old Town and Community Real, or we can look at that area, or if you have some ideas as what you would like to see done, we've got 32 options, plus a plethora of others out there. So I'd like to see what comments you have, if you like the approach that we have here of trying to tackle these three projects to finish off the Old Town corridor, or if you want to branch out to some other areas. So I'm open for questions.
Can you repeat again the cheapest, I shouldn't say cheapest, the within-budget option over by the school for me?
Okay. Down by Daniel Bright is the area you're talking about.
Yes.
Okay. The, again, the option itself doesn't go to the school, so it doesn't go down Monte Tesoro. It basically would be from Monte Tesoro to Chuckwalla on the north side of Fur. That's the cheapest one I've kind of broken out for you, and that's about $250,000. And that would be, basically, we would remove a little bit of the existing asphalt that's there, because we've got a rough edge, it's not working pretty well. We'd replace that with a thickened edge on the asphalt, so that way vehicles would be able to park there, and also for driveways, they'd be able to drive across it, not damage that pavement as much as it does right now. We'd have a two-foot buffer of like an AB-type material or stabilized decomposed granite to help provide a demarcation that you shouldn't be driving there, and then you'd have the walking path right behind that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other?
I just, I, you know, I'm big for us trying to get over by the school, where we have, you know, kids blocking that we didn't have years, you know, in years past, because it was K through second grade, and you don't really see those kids, you know, walking and riding their bikes, and now it's K through eight. But I also, I'd like to see us connect the Gray Fox area too, because I see people walk, and then, you know, I wish we could then get Clarkdale to connect too, but that's, you know, it'd be nice. I was talking to some people the other day, how nice it would be if Old Town, Cottonwood, and Clark, Old Town, Clarkdale, you know, you could walk, and they connected, or bicycle, you know. But obviously, that's not going to happen, so I'd like to hear what others say, because I like both options.
If I could chime in real quick, Clarkdale is looking at doing bike lanes on Main Street that would come all the way to the city limits, that would take you into Old Town.
And they're slowing that speed limit down on their portion as well. That would be nice, because I do see people, you know, walking along, you know, once they get past Gray Fox, walking on the street, and, you know, it's dangerous.
A little treacherous, yeah.
Yeah.
With Rain Spirit now, too, because there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that comes down, or bicycle traffic from Rain Spirit, the place is full.
Well, with that building that Craig Backus, you know, what he's going to be doing in Old Town, you know, Clarkdale trying to build it up as well, you know, it would be nice to connect the two historic districts. But I also would like to see us take care of over by the school, so.
Sure. Other thoughts from council?
Well, I kind of started this. So the overriding question is whether we're going to use the money that was going to be directed to the pension liability funding and use it for something local. And obviously, I kind of advocated for that. I met with Ron, I met with Rudy, and wanted to know what their thoughts are and what the advantages were to paying down, and I'm big on paying down debt. I like that. But I'm convinced, and what I've heard from them and gotten their opinion, is that the pension liability fund is not really run very well. We're on track eventually to pay it down. This would just kind of add to that, and maybe make it happen just a little bit sooner, but we're not going to get much for our money as far as that goes. It seems like a big number, but thrown in that big pension pot, we don't get much bang for our buck, and that it would be probably a good thing, and I would think our citizens would really be happy with what we are looking to kind of do with this, so I'm all for it.
Which way?
Well, as I said, I brought it up, and for consideration on using it locally rather than going to the pension funding. So I'm all for using this for our sidewalks.
But which sidewalks?
Oh, I, you know, that's, I'm just as happy to go with what staff's recommendations are here, unless somebody had something else to suggest or had other favorites.
Thank you.
And I agree. We have to start somewhere. This is a long list, and I think any of these projects, they all have merit, and let's just start somewhere. I think you've chosen three really good projects. I really like the Clarkdale connector and over by the Elm and Main Street. These are all good projects. I also appreciate what Councilmember Matthews just said. I had some initial hesitation, but after some additional information, it does appear as though the money would be better suited here locally, just, you know, as he had indicated. So I think this looks good personally.
Okay.
Well, I also like the suggestion staff made for starting here in Old Town and getting that taken care of. I also agree with Councilmember Altouse that we do need to protect our kids, so I could go either way with that as well.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I think anytime you can improve things for the kids, where they travel a lot, whether it be school, or in the summer, or the pool, whatever would be my preference. But I think you're all correct. It's, any one of these projects would be worthy project.
Councilmember Hulse, you have any thoughts, one way or the other, on how the, what funding priorities you might have?
Well, I, of course, would like to see Fur Street completed. I understand, you know, the needs to complete for Old Town as well. The only thoughts I would have is, is if we decide not to do Fur Street tonight, that it be the number-one priority for the next sidewalk, walkway project that we embark on, only because of the children, and there are more children moving into that neighborhood. Our next-door neighbors that just moved in have a 10-year-old son who goes back and forth to Daniel Bright every day, sometimes on his bike and sometimes on foot, but, so the population of children is increasing. Parents and even senior citizens are out on Fur Street all the time, walking, walking their dogs, or just walking their families. So it's, traffic has increased, as I think you're aware of.
Yes.
So I can go either way. I have to be fair. Don't want to be prejudiced, but I'm a little bit that way.
And I think I agree with the rest of council. I could see, I could go both ways on this. I think in terms of numbers of pedestrians served, I think our community's money would be best invested in the Old Town District, because that's what gets traveled the most by pedestrian traffic, and there's some real deficiencies in the connections of sidewalk, you know. And I think with the developments that are going on in Clarkdale, I think we're going to see an increase in that, but in youth, protection of our youth is also very important to me, so making sure that those kids have a safe place to traverse to and from school. So I think we're just going to need a motion from somebody.
I'll do that. So I move to approve the use of the $259,180 in funding set aside for pension liability funding, 10% from the half-cent sales tax increase for use in constructing sidewalk infill projects, as recommended by staff.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Matthews made the motion, and Narin seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Altouse.
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews.
Yes.
Councilmember Narin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky.
Yes.
And motion carried.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. We've come to the end of the, of the public meeting here, so we, I would move to pay the claims and adjustments?
Let's do that.
Okay. You made the motion. Councilmember Matthews seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. And then up next is a review of the city attorney's contract and position, and which is to be held in executive session pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes 38-4, 31.03A1, and other statutes I'm not going to read right now. The council may vote to convene in executive session to review the employment of the city attorney, subject to the city attorney's right to compel the council to discuss this matter in an open meeting. The council may additionally receive legal advice pertaining to the city attorney's position and give direction pertaining to the negotiation of contract with the city attorney, Ms. Wilber.
Hello. I just wanted you all to know that the attorney, Justin Pierce, who we have scheduled to talk to you during the executive session, is not quite ready yet.
Okay.
He's in El Mirage's council meeting, and he let me know he would text me as soon as he's out and ready, so.
Okay.
I don't know what direction you want to go, if you want to go and start talking without him, and then say questions for later, or go into a break before we go out.
Up to council.
I'd say go to a break and wait for the city attorney, or, I mean, Justin Pierce to be available would be.
Okay. That's what we'll do, so.
I mean, I'm just one person, no? I mean.
I agree. I agree with Councilmember Altouse on that. It's like, wow!
Maybe we can all meet down in Kate's, then?
Right.
Just an idea.
I think we'll just have a recess then until Mr. Pierce is available, and for all those folks in the audience yet tonight, we'll be meeting primarily in the executive session. You're welcome to stick around until we come out, but that's it for tonight, for the most part.
Thank you.